Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Board of Trustees meeting for the School Tennis Speedway for October 8th, 2019. We are working from a 12-item agenda and the first item is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on September 20th, 2019.
I'll move that we accept the minutes from our September 20th meeting.
Thank you.
I'll... No matter, either one of us sec-- I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No.
Great. Items two, maybe three, maybe four, adopt resolution to transfer amounts.
Thank you, Mr. President. This action allows our treasurer to transfer funds from the education fund to the operations fund to pay expenses charged to the operations fund, which were previously charged to the education fund. This would include but not limit to expenses of the district administration, custodians, utilities, supplies. This is a state mandated manner, which demonstrates how much state funding is dedicated to something rather than classroom education students. Mr. President, that is number two. Number three will allow us to transfer the same-- or transfer amounts of operations fund to the education fund. And number four will transfer amounts of referendum fund to the education fund. Again, that will balance our budget of the education software expenses, put that where they are supposed to go. And the last one is the expenses associated with the extracurricular activities such as athletic coaches, academic coaches, band choir, and clubs. My recommendation would be to approve number two, three, and four.
Laura?
I move that we approve the three resolutions. The first, to transfer amounts from the education fund to the operations fund. The second, to transfer amounts from the operations fund to the education fund before December 1st, 2020. And the third, to transfer amounts from the referendum fund to the education fund as well. Sounds like the same as the second, but as they were stated, that they're different.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Debbie. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
We need signatures on two sets of each. So, Mr. President and the secretary.
It's one pair.
That's good. Let's come to you.
Thank you.
Three sets of two.
Mm-hmm.
Item number five, report on the 2018-2019 state testing results.
I want to share with you how our schools did this past year in testing. The first one we're talking about is the I-Learn test. I-Learn was given in grades three through eight just last year. There's a new test, new online test. The I-Learn test is a test that when you take it on the computer, it gives you a harder question if you get it right.
Get it wrong, it gives you an easier question. So, they call it a level test. And so, it was in grades three through eight. And you've probably seen in the media how some of the scores have dropped over previous years in I-Step. I shared with you back when we first got the results how we did, but I wanted to share with you tonight how we have done and compared to other school corporations and across the state. And then I will explain a little bit about I-Step. So, the first of this is how our students did in English Language Arts in grades three through eight. I don't know how we can see that, but it is in your packet. When you see the corporation total, which is kind of how these things will be ranked, it's kind of a-- it's not a good way to do it because they take the average of all grade levels across to come up with that corporation total. But as you can see in Marion County, we were first in one, two, three, four, five of the grade levels. We were third in one of the grade level. And you think we can be horrible when we're third in grade four. We're analyzing, trying to figure out why that's the case. But this is English Language Arts as it compares to Marion County. This is how our kids did in-- this is how our kids did in math. And our kids did numbers far better in math, which makes sense because of our numbers of the Yale students' numbers that have increased. As you can see, there's two grade levels that were not as-- not first in Marion County. And you look at there's-- but there's some grade levels, like the eighth grade, more than 30 points above, or about 30 points above what our closest Marion County school was. So, how did we-- we've always done real well in Marion County. So, how did we do in our area? Here are 26 of the surrounding school districts. And if you can see, we're about the middle of the pack. And again, the way they rank these is based on the average across in the corporation total. This is a better indicator at the bottom. We were 11th out of 26, 23rd out of 26, 15th out of 26, 19th out of 26, 10th out of 26. And I think the great news with that is, if you look at some of the corporations we're comparing ourselves to, some of these corporations have less than 1% of Yale population. And this is English Language Arts. You know, I think our teachers and our kids did quite well in English part of this. The next one is math. We're higher up in math. Again, I think I give all the credit to our teachers and our students. Again, if you want to do the little comparison at the bottom, our third grade tested real well this past year. Fourth grade didn't test very well. Third grade tested real well. So, we're fourth out of 26, fifth out of 26 in the eighth grade. So, in the I-Step, or the I-Learn portion of our state testing, I think the numbers looked very good. I've talked to several of our surrounding school districts and they would do trade scores. So, that's in grades three through eight. I can't tell you, we started a new-- we started a new test, and we just started this week. It's called Airways. Airways is a test that's produced by American Institution of Research, which is the one that does the I-Learn test. And what I-- what we're finding so far is our kids are taking a long time to take the test, which they're not supposed to do. To me, that means they're taking it very serious. And we'll find out from that what our results are and can be a predictor of how we're doing in spring. So, I think it's just a great thing that we're doing so we get our kids ready to be tested in the spring. So, that's the I-Learn portion of the test, or of the assessments. The high school is different. The high school stayed at-- the high school stayed in an I-Step, which is what they've been through the past few years. And then they'll have one more year of I-Step this year, and then they'll get away from I-Step. High school results were fantastic. As you can see, if you look at Marion County, you know, we're the tops in Marion County across the board. And if you can look at those scores, you know, 30 points better than our nearest competitor in English Language Arts and about 40 points greater in math in Marion County. And again, this is sophomores that take this test. So, how do we do with our-- you know, this is in Marion County. How do we do with the area public schools? The answer to that question is, is great. We were second overall in the area. And you can see some of the other schools in our area. I can scroll it down. So, here are the other schools in our area. And the fact that we ended up, our kids, our students performed, and our teachers got them to do so well is just phenomenal. What I think is really interesting is, if you look at our I-Step scores are, this is in the state. So, this is how-- this is how our-- every high school in the state of Indiana is ranked. Percentage passing both English and Language Arts. I touched it with my sleeve. English and Language Arts. And you can see that we are 16th. And I think the interesting thing is that the blue over here represents public schools. Public schools, some of those that are above us are private schools, some of them have very many students. So, the fact that we're the fourth best public school in the state of Indiana on I-Step is just phenomenal. If you want to see some of the surrounding school districts that we did better than top 60 schools. So, Speedway High School did very well in our I-Step class this past year. It's the same stuff that should happen in the country. So, we have experts in the room as far as I-Learn and I-Step is concerned. Do you have any questions with our results on I-Step? Of course, I could be proud of what this is. And when I talk to our fellow curriculum directors, they always ask, "How do you guys do it?" It's like, easy. These guys over here are great teachers. So, questions?
I'd just say thank you for all the great work. You know, the state continues to throw difficult tests and different tests at you every year. And every year, we're impressed and really appreciate all the effort that goes into this. Thank you.
If that leads right into the next thing on the agenda, then if there aren't questions, and that is, each year, we have to produce a school improvement plan, legal standards. And we take information like this, and it's taken us a while because we did not want to create those without this type of results. So, to meet our legal standards, we write these plans. And tonight, we have the administration of each one of the high school, the junior high, and the elementary that will share with you an executive summary of their plan. I do have the entire written plans, if you'd like to see those. But they're here to share their executive summaries with us this evening. So, we will start with the high school and Mr. Zartman.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me the time to do a brief overview of our school improvement plan. But before I start, I would want to say that there's no way our students at the high school would be achieving at the levels that they are if it wasn't for the preparation and the foundational skills that they are getting at the elementaries and junior highs. So, I do want to give a special thank you to my colleagues and the leadership of those buildings. When we look at our school improvement plan, we really have three goals that drive our focus and what we do at the high school. Goal one is surrounding our graduation rate. We are proud to be above 98% last school year. We, in most years, have been able to stay in those high 90s, and that remains our goal. We have a lot of things that go into trying to achieve that goal. But now that-- or since we've been able to establish a baseline in the high 90s, we start looking at, you know, what else can we do for our students that are graduating and leaving our halls? And one of those things is a new initiative. We call it the 3E, which is simply, our goal is 100% of our graduating seniors, when they leave our building, they will be either enrolled in a secondary institution, they will either be enlisted in the armed forces, or they will be employed in a high-wage-earning field. And we kind of-- we have a framework set up to monitor that, as well as connect our students with different opportunities in all three of those. Another area of focus in regards to the graduation rate is our continuation of wanting to increase our percentage of honors diplomas that are being earned by our students. We had a slight increase, again, this past year of those. And the big reason we focus on those is it's a good measurement of how many of our students are not only taking our most rigorous course offerings at the high school, but are also being successful in those. Goal two focuses on our advanced placement program. We have enjoyed tremendous growth the last few years. As you can see in the summary, we were up significantly, both in the total of-- total number of students taking AP classes, as well as the total number of exams that we gave. And we are also up in the total number of students that were successful in achieving a qualifying score on those exams. One data point we do watch or track as we are increasing those numbers is that percentage of exams that are qualifying, or the percentage of exams that we give that a student earns a qualifying exam on. And we were able to increase that as well. We've been able to get that up to almost 45% and still maintain, or we are still looking at ways to increase that as we move forward. I will note that, once again, this year, we are up in our numbers. We currently have approximately 320 students at the high school that are enrolled in an AP course. That is almost 60% of our student population. And as of now, we are anticipating giving around 740 total AP exams.
How many is that?
740 exams, 320 total students. Another data point we track with that is our percentage of cohort that leaves our building with passing at least one AP exam. We were almost at 45% last year. Just to give you a little bit of perspective on that, there are less than 10 public schools in the state that are at that percentage or higher. Goal three centers around I-Step, both on the math and English side. Obviously, we're very, very proud of what our students and teachers accomplished this last year. But we are firm believers at the high school that we, no matter where we are, we always want to try to get better and find ways to increase the rigor in our classes and raise the expectations for our students. Big driving force behind that is our student success teams within our PLCs that we meet every Monday morning in. They are-- or they are the ones that oversee our multi-tiered system of supports. Just to kind of highlight a couple of those, we have an intensive progress monitoring program that includes our AC remediation and enrichment program, where we focus on all students at different levels of the academic spectrum. We also have our BSD and lab classes. And lastly, our after-school studies table program that has proven to be very successful over the last couple of years. That is our school improvement plan in a nutshell. If anyone has any questions or would like me to go into detail on anything, I'd be happy to do so at this time. Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Roseborough.
Tough act to follow. Well, good evening, everyone. Hopefully, I'm a little better with this microphone than I was at the football game tonight announcing. We didn't fare so well, so I'll do a better job here. And also, I'd like to thank the elementary principals for the quality of students that they send us. It's amazing that how well-prepared they are when we get them, and then we've got a great staff that just kind of takes it and runs with it, so. But I summed up our-- you have the summary there of our student, our school improvement plan. And Mr. Disney took a lot of my thunder away with some of the results I was going to share, so I'll just highlight a few of those. But it starts with the description of our school and community, and there's-- it's very similar as far as demographics from the year before. One thing we've noticed, we have-- our enrollment's gone up approximately 20 kids, and we are at about 285 as of today. So, we've grown a little bit as far as enrollment. The summary of data is the next section, and that's, again, like Mr. Disney said, was a little shocking when we first got the I-Learn results from what we were used to seeing 80s and 90s. And it took a little while for the dust to settle. But once it did, we started seeing other schools' results, started comparing and putting them in charts, and exactly what, like I said, Mr. Disney just did up there. And I'd just like to highlight a couple of things. We were first in Marion County in all six categories that I chose to break down, and that was seventh grade math, seventh grade English Language Arts, seventh grade both, eighth grade math, eighth grade English Language Arts, eighth grade both. Couple highlights in the eighth grade math, the closest to us in Marion County was 26.8 percentage points away. So, then the smallest margin that we won by was 11.1%. So, we were quite a ways ahead of our other Marion County schools. I did also look at the state, like, again, like Mr. Disney did, and I just have to brag on two areas. I pulled out the private and charter schools, and our eighth grade math finished third behind only Brownsburg and Barrie in the state in passing. And passing both, our eighth graders were fifth, against by-- behind Barrie, Brownsburg, Carmel, Southeast of Boys. So, kudos to those teachers for what they do every day. Getting into our goals. Our goals have not changed. It's kind of like, "Why fix if it's not broke?" kind of a theory that we have. But we did add a few, and we tweaked a little bit. With our first goal was, all students will grow in math comprehension. We still do our STAR math test. We still do-- we have the Alex program. And that program, which determines the level of where the student starts, and then instructs, and then periodically assesses as they go, and kind of stretches them at their own pace. We have 17 students involved in that program right now. The new one, the Airways, we just started this week. A little different than what we thought, a little-- taking a little longer than we thought, but that's okay. We have seen some results, some of the reports, and breaking those down a little bit today, looks like that's going to be very helpful. Drilling down the data, we can actually go down to specific questions, even print those off, use them as instructional, you know, for a bellwork type activity or whatever. So, it looks like that's going to be very beneficial, the new Airways test. We still are breaking our seventh graders down into-- in math, into a couple type groups or pathways. We have the Accelerate Math program, which is just the basic continuing on the nine weeks, and we have 74 kids in that. And then we have a pre-algebra, where we kind of separate the ones that are a little more advanced in math, the last nine weeks of the year. In that program, we are going to have 66, it looks like, right now. So, also then, the eighth grade, we have pre-algebra, and we have algebra, which is a high school credit course. And right now, pre-algebra, we are at 77 students. In an algebra classes, we already have up to 60 taking algebra in the eighth grade. And lastly, we actually have three seventh grade students this year that qualify to take algebra as seventh graders by taking, like, a pre-algebra semester final that's generated by our staff. If they get a certain score, they are allowed to, or qualified to go to algebra. We have three of those students. And we have one eighth grader right now that's taking the honors pre-AP geometry. So, a little summary of our math goal. Goal two is that we would improve growth in reading comprehension. It's going to sound pretty similar. We still do STAR reading, accelerated reading. The Airways, the only little bit of difference with the Airways with the Language Arts is that there's two tests that will have a reading and a writing section. We haven't gotten to the writing yet. We're just now in the reading portion, so we don't have any real data to check yet. We also have honors still offered in seventh grade and eighth grade. So, we have an honors eighth grade, honors seventh grade Language Arts class. And we also pick up with the Language Arts lab, where we have a reading specialist that picks up those readers that are lower-level preparedness or not quite at the grade level. Right now, we're servicing 40 students, getting them some extra help in our Language Arts lab so to help our reading comprehension. So, that's how we're attacking goal two with reading. And goal three is to meet or exceed 97% student attendance. We did that last year. We were right on it, 97%. So, we're not changing a lot. We still monitor attendance, still send the letters home. We started something last year, our quarterly attendance, perfect attendance celebrations. And we're getting ready to have our first one. We were going to have it this week with our Airways test. We're going to move it to after fall break, so Airways is thick a little longer. The new incentive, which is something we're trying this year with the help of Mr. Maple, our athletic director, and helping attendance again, is we have allowing any student who has perfect attendance the prior week to get in free to any athletic activity the following week. So, if you have perfect attendance the next week, if it's a volleyball game, a football game, you get in free. So, kids are pretty excited about it. And it's kind of hard to track, but it's working out, so it's just another boost to get them to come to school. And that's kind of it. I have to brag just a little bit again on a program we started last year. It's not in this year. It's a VIP program to kind of reward positive behavior, very impressive plug program. It went crazy last year, and Mr. Grove said that last year, we-- he tracks it. We gave out over 3,500 VIPs to our kids, catching them doing the right thing, and they're real excited about that. So, that's just an update from last year. So, that's the junior high, quickly in a nutshell.
Good?
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Dr. Wolf.
They're saving it up. Good evening. I am representing all four elementary buildings. And I know how that happens. I bet you can guess which principal was in the restroom when John asked for volunteers to present this evening. So, having said that, they're all here to ask questions of. You have four really unique elementary buildings, but the common thing we all have that we could have told you the last two years is our children are getting more diverse, they're needier, we have more free and reduced lunches, we have more ENL children, the job's tougher. But we all agree that we have three things in common that really is a basis for us to help our children. And one of those would be our small class sizes. We have some of the smallest class sizes in Marion County, and we continue with that. It makes a huge difference for us. The second thing is our coaches. They provide that quality professional development for us, and we're all very good at using those people and that resource. And the quality of our teachers. By far, we employ some of the best teachers around. So, having that the same in the building helps us address our individual needs. And we'd like to say that, oh, don't pay attention to I-Learn. You know, our children did not suddenly get 30% dumber and our teachers more inept. The rules of the game changed, and we've got to learn to play the game better. So, we decided, as we're waiting for these results, all four of us would tackle two things that would help us get a jumpstart on everybody. And one is a new reading adoption. So, we have a committee together, and Jay and I are co-chairing that. He was in the bathroom that time. So, that's how he's there with me. But we are looking at what we're doing in reading across the district and how that will meet each of our students' needs. You know, some of us have those really low kids that can't speak English, but some of us have those high ability kids that we need to push. So, we're trying to find a good match for that. And reading can be a pretty expensive adoption. We had actually, if you recall, put that off for a year because we were waiting to see I-Learn, where we were, how that was going to all fit together. If you can't read, you can't do much of anything else. The second thing we decided to tackle was kind of a--
So that's just an update from last year. So that's the junior high, quickly in a nutshell. Good?
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Dr. Wolf.
They're saving it up. Good evening. I am representing all four elementary buildings, and I know how that happens. I bet you can guess which principal was in the restroom when John asked for volunteers to present this evening. So, having said that, they're all here to ask questions of. You have four really unique elementary buildings, but the common thing we all have that we could have told you the last two years is our children are getting more diverse, they're needier, we have more free and reduced lunches, we have more ENL children, the job's tougher, but we all agree that we have three things in common that really is a basis for us to help our children. And one of those would be our small class sizes. We have some of the smallest class sizes in Marion County, and we continue with that. It makes a huge difference for us. The second thing is our coaches. They provide that quality professional development for us, and we're all very good at using those people and that resource. And the quality of our teachers. By far, we employ some of the best teachers around. So having that the same in the building helps us address our individual needs, and we'd like to say that, oh, don't pay attention to I-Learn. You know, our children did not suddenly get 30% dumber and our teachers more inept. The rules of the game changed, and we've got to learn to play the game better. So we decided, as we're waiting for these results, all four of us would tackle two things that would help us get a jump start on everybody, and one is a new reading adoption. So we have a committee together, and Jay and I are co-chairing that. He was in the bathroom that time, so that's how he's there with me. But we are looking at what we're doing in reading across the district and how that will meet each of our students' needs. You know, some of us have those really low kids that can't speak English, but some of us have those high ability kids that we need to push. So we're trying to find a good match for that, and reading can be a pretty expensive adoption. We had actually, if you recall, put that off for a year because we were waiting to see I-Learn, where we were, how that was going to all fit together. If you can't read, you can't do much of anything else. The second thing we decided to tackle was kind of a last-minute addition with this airways testing, when John discovered it and said, do you guys want to pilot this thing? I know you've got lots of stuff going, but you want to try it? And we all said yes, that we need to know how this works so that we can play the game better and keep growing the children, not just being stuck where we are. So that's what you'll see in our plans, along with general information for each of the buildings, that gives you a feel for where we're headed. And Betsy will answer all your questions.
Make no mistake about it, the culture of this place is set by you guys. The culture is created by you guys. The culture is set by these guys that are out here. What they're not saying is the hours they sit with little Johnny sometimes in a hallway to get him back engaged into learning. And that's what I've seen in the last couple of years walking the buildings. These guys, these principals are second to none, and you guys create a culture that allows this to happen. The students, the parents, the community, the board is thankful for each and every one of you. And I'm passionate about saying this over and over again, 3.4 kids out of 10, 34% of our corporation walks into your guys' doors, and English is a second language. And the last time I checked, I learned I-step and all the other I's that they throw at us, it's in English. It's like trying to coach a football team, and the kids can't walk. And our people, our administration, our teams, our teachers tackle that each and every day. Not 175 days, we do it 183 days. Not on some Fridays, but every Friday, and that makes me so proud. The students and the parents and the community, we are very proud of you guys. So each and every day, it's tough. 59% of our corporation this year is free and reduced. And the number one predictor of our test scores across the state is poverty. There is no way that anybody can say that Speedway should be on that list on any of our levels with 59% poverty. There's research on it, and we know the truth. So thank you very much. These numbers are something that, what we're not talking about. We're going back to work now on the kids we didn't get, because that's just what we do. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, board.
Thank you all very much.
You guys are welcome to stay for the rest of this meeting if you want, but now's the time to exit if you want to.
We'll pause quietly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Item number seven, discuss concepts for the Newbie project.
Mark Beebe is here with Lancer Plus Beebe, Architect, Planning and Interiors. He's here to continue our conversation on the addition of Newbie Elementary. Mr. Disney will help him get, oh, never mind, no need help from Mr. Disney on the specific plans. Mr. Beebe, thank you for being here, and please inform us on some of the changes you've done from the last time you've been here.
Okay, well, good evening, and thanks for having me back. I'm really a little reluctant to kind of follow that. Actually, this is a little challenging for me, given Mark.
Yes, I'll go ahead and take us through some of the refinements and updates here on the floor plan. So this should look very similar to where we were the last time. We're looking at the, it's a four-classroom, three-net addition here with an additional alternate classroom shown at the end, which would be, give us that added four, four net classrooms here. All 900 square feet with casework built in. You can also see the remodel to the restroom. So the restrooms here show six water closets on each side, and those would be per your new standard that would have the floor-to-ceiling partitions. There's three sets of lavatories out here that fit off the corridor to allow students to really kind of get in and use that, use the facilities, while staying out of the path of travel in the corridor. We felt like it was important to keep that, keep it pulled back so we're not congregating and congesting the corridor. There are doors shown here at the corridor here. Those would be probably on a fire alarm sensor hold open, so a magnetic hold open, so they would remain open probably most of the time. So there's great supervision from here. Teachers can monitor and watch what's happening within the restroom from that location. This is perhaps a little new item shown. There's some doors that are shown here that are required per building code. The building's not currently sprinkled, so we need those just to create that fire separation as we build this new addition. Those, again, would be on a magnetic hold open, so most of the time, the teacher students wouldn't even really realize that they're there, but they would be part of the fire alarm system. That's really kind of it, as we look at the plan that we've talked about, having the entrance kind of pulled around, opening up toward the north, so it's highly visible from the main entry and the, sort of that circle drive as you come in from the north. I might pause just for any questions or comments as we think about the upgrades and improvements here. Okay, the next thing I was going to pull up is just an overview of the scope of work as we're looking at it. So the 6,300 square foot new addition with three net added classrooms, interior restroom remodel, we're showing a budget for that. Here's shown 1.5 million, and then there's soft costs that we're including here just to kind of round out what our total project cost is. So included in the soft costs would be the design fees, survey, geotechnical work, reimbursables, which includes printing mileage. There is going to be a variance that we need to move forward with, with an addition like this. And then some furnitures, fixtures, equipment, so that's the classroom, build out all the equipment and furniture needed for the classroom. So that kind of gives us the additional program that we need for the total project cost of 1.7 million. So beyond that, we have some alternates that we've listed, including the additional classroom and the corridor extension shown here. That's that four net added classroom, the very last one at the end. Upgrading windows and the materials to match the existing, so that's the concrete masonry units on the walls and exterior, and the windows to match the, what the existing windows look like more, continuous horizontal windows. The new chiller work is shown, and then security upgrades. And I will note, I made a little bit of an error on this figure. I believe I took this number just based on what, I believe I thought the grant money was, but this doesn't include all of the school's desired upgrades. I think this figure is probably more in the, I think it's in the 120, 150 range, I think is, if I'm not mistaken. Dr. Sharpe, am I close on that?
Yeah, let me clarify on this. The school's safety grant is roughly right around $80,000.
Okay.
Very similar until last year. He took the number that I gave him for that and used it for half of that, which would make sense. The security doors that we're talking about, for an alternate bid on this, would be the safety doors by the front entrance of Newbie. So it would be by the kindergarten K1, I believe, is over there, and then back towards the hallway by the first set of bathrooms. So we had Lancer and Beebe last year already draw these up, an architect. We had this bid it out, and it was, it was, this is a costly one because of the existing materials they're going to have to attach it to in Newbie, but we were planning on doing this anyway. So we just wanted to see the alternate bid involved in this, and I would say roughly about $110,000, $120,000 would cover us long on this. But we do have money built in to the safety grant that will pay for some of this. Long story short, probably about $100,000 if you just want a round number.
So to clarify, when we're looking at the alternate bid one, two, three, and four, if we wanted to add that four net classroom, that alternate bid one, would that be with that material matching, like in alternate two? So would it still have the concrete masonry?
Right. Yeah, good question. Yeah, so we, yeah, that would, if we wanted, if you wanted to move forward with two, it could be with or without that additional classroom. So, yeah, if you wanted the additional classroom, and you wanted to pick up this alternate two, that's, that could be either way.
No, I think what Luke's asking is, is the 240 to 280 with alternative one? So if like I, like I say, okay, my thought would be the 1.7 and alternative two and three and four. And I'm not interested in the fourth classroom.
Okay.
And so then you said, yeah, with that fourth classroom, is that going to be higher because I already have two in there?
You're right. Yeah. There is a little premium on that, that I'm not, there is perhaps a, sort of a, an alternate 1A that we should probably list, if it was, if there's additional classroom with or without the upgrades.
So if you go with one, two goes up for the alternate?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. Good question.
That's right. Yes, maybe where there's a, there's a 2A, I guess I should, we should list it that way.
Could I talk about the pros and cons of adding the last classroom? So if we go with alternate one, we'll probably never be able to come in and add a classroom at that price since we're already there. That's the biggie on that. The big question on the other side of the fence is, do we need another classroom on that? And that's a valid question. In the last two years, we've taken away every classroom from the related arts, the library. We have kids and teachers doing interventions in closets. If you build it, we're going to fill it. We have 244 kids at Newbie right now, at this, as of, I think, Friday, giving the last update, so we have 244. Every classroom, every closet's being used. Would we use it? Yes.
For what?
Yeah, well, well, once you get the admin team, I think, together, we'd do it, immediately we would break up that second classroom. So if we have a net four classroom, we would use it immediately for the special ed room. We'd pull in the related arts room back in and for another classroom, then we'd have the second classroom if we would have, if we continue to grow. So two classrooms, related arts, and possibly the fourth room we took away from special needs.
So then if you had to split it in half next year, you'd be looking at moving special ed out or something else, no worries, all three of them would be used if we had three.
Mark, what's the advantage in insetting the entryway doors, or exit doors, actually? As opposed to, let's pretend for a second we put the fourth, well, the fifth room on there. What's the advantage of insetting those doors as opposed to going solid, straight across?
So what we'd look to do here is extend the roof across, a little bit of roof coverage, so we wouldn't have to extend a canopy. We sort of like build in.
Can lever the roof so you've got protection on the doorway?
Exactly. That's really kind of it.
Other thoughts or questions about this? Are people comfortable with the project base, and are they comfortable with any of the alternates?
Do we have right now, how many, one is fourth, the only, fourth is the only one class?
One class at 26.
So it's only the only one, it's one class, right?
Correct.
So to need another, there's not like we'd have to split another classroom. To need another classroom, we'd have to have, we'd have to need three classrooms of a grade at Newbie.
That would, that'd be correct, on classrooms.
Were we already planning on doing this chiller?
Yes.
Where was the chiller in the, like, what year was that out? Is that, is it near future?
So it was in '95, right? It's appropriated through the capital assets plan that we already did with Allison Wheeler. They're up this year.
Right.
So I appropriated money for that already, which, which all that means is we get the lump sum, and I paid off out of that fund. Same with security doors. There's a chunk that will come off that.
So if we set all four alternates, you're confident that financially that's...
Yeah, 2.3 million, pay out of rainy day, 500,000, to be transparent, $500,000 out of rainy day to get us up 1.8. And then we are working on with our assessed values coming out now on what that would look like on a three, four, five-year payback. Our debt fund right now is .0019, which is basically zero, $12,000, which we're very fortunate for that. This, we, this is something we would add to our debt fund, and that's how we pay this back, and I would say three years on what I'm saying would be appropriate at nine or 10 cents. We can also adjust our referendum to counter that. So we can look at a lot of things once January turns around on how to pay it back. That's down the road. But for right now, I know that where we're at here, finance, financially, yes, we can do it all, or we can do pieces of this, not a problem. I do know that he's on a timeline, that tomorrow's a big day to at least get him started on doing surveys if we're going to get this in in the fall. So we're kind of up to, what do we feel comfortable with right now? Is there, is there a part of this we can talk again later on maybe alternate one? Or is this something we got to tell you everything right now, Mark?
No, I, we can certainly talk later on perhaps some of these other elements to include. I know I had submitted an agreement that had some of these included, and some weren't, just because, I'm sorry, I got a little excited, and so I went ahead and made some assumptions on what I thought was in and what wasn't. So the agreement that we sent, the program we listed, it does include the alternate for the existing, for the new, the additional classroom and the chiller. The language of it did not include the alternate two or alternate four. So we probably just look to wrap those into perhaps an addendum or amendment to the agreement to just take those on, and if that's something the board would like to do, we'd be happy to roll that in for a simple amendment to our agreement.
Is anyone concerned with, at a minimum, the base project? Is there any objection at all? What's the board's pleasure? Do we want to go through these kind of alternative bid at a time? Do we want to?
Well, I guess my question is, I'm not sure without...
I just would say, with my experience, this is the cheapest this additional room will ever be.
And I'm not. I think that's a silly argument. There's all kinds of things that I can get, and this is the cheapest building that I'm ever going to be, but do I need it? And I have all kinds of things that I've purchased because they were cheap and great, good time to buy it, that I actually don't need, and that concerns me. I have a very hard time believing that we are going to have more than 13 kids in one grade that would require us to do a third split at Newbie. I just, I mean, that's what we're talking about. We're talking about a classroom that's going to sit that we're going to spend money on, that's great deal or not, but is going to sit there with, we're making up the use for it, and the stuff in it, and everything else, until we get over, and honestly, it's more than that, because we have several of those grades that are sitting at 13, 13, you know, 14, 14, 15. So you'd go, you know, eight more kids before you'd even think about, and then you'd have to have the whole, and, you know, so that, that's just hard for me to think that, because you can't split, you know, you can't split to go to, or why are we going to split to go to 10, 10, 10? We're not. So it has to get to that place of, it justifies, it makes sense to have a full three with another teacher with, and that concerns me. And I guess I'm just not, I'm not sold on the, it will cost us less to do it now. I don't see how we need it. I don't see how we need it.
Where are we with Newbie compared to other schools in terms of available space? And if we looked at Allison or Wheeler or Fisher?
The next, right, with Wheeler's addition, we have multiple classrooms, plus all the extra rooms that we need that are filled, and we have room to grow in each of those classrooms, because we split the last one, a class of three. There is one classroom left over there we could take away from their library room. So we got a little room at Wheeler still. We're okay. Allison, the way the numbers are, 300, just a few kids over 300, we're solid with two classes. Unless something comes like a whole busload of second graders, we're in really good shape. We'd have to move some things around there, but as long as it's balanced, we're fine there. Fisher's down to one or two classrooms left. We're gonna steal those away, because the junior high number's gonna go over 300. When's the last time we were at 300 in the junior high?
When I was there, it was 311.
It's been a while. So that's gonna be kind of at the seams. You know, what I'm hearing here is that we're pretty solid on the project base. Alternate two, three, and four sounds like we're green light, and if we give you, hey, we get the contract, we understand that if we can move forward with, is that what you need to where I can come back the next board meeting, November, the second Tuesday in November, and just get a little more information about alternate one of saying, this is exactly, as of right now, this is how these rooms would be filled in? And maybe that would be a little more yea or nay at that point in time. Is that enough information for you to keep moving for fall of '20?
Yeah, I think so. So what I'm hearing is, we're gonna, we're gonna redraft that agreement. We'll take care of that separately, but, you know, if we could, it sounds like we're gonna be given kind of green light authorization to proceed based on this and these, so that we can get our surveying going and those kind of things, and is that?
And then pause on alternate one until next November, and that's fine on your guys on the surveys. You can get work started there to get rolling on that. And I'd like to see the update on alternate two. If we do with one, I'd like to see one B or whatever it's called, two A. Hey, if we do this, that's gonna be extra this, that, and the other, and know exactly, hey, that's where it's gonna be bumped. Is that fair?
I think that, yeah, I think that sounds great.
It gets us going, guys. It gets us going. And we're not, we can come back and look at that, but.
Yeah, I definitely, I mean, I'm not, and besides which, I'm one of five, so that's, you know, the end of things, what you do. But it is, you know, I have a hard time visualizing that, so I would be much more interested in.
Lance wants a big office.
I'd be much more interested in just kind of the, as I'm visualizing the numbers off of that, you know, piece of paper we had last week, but I can't remember. I'm just looking at, it's like, I mean, we got the one, but all the others, it seems like it'd be some time.
Yeah.
Okay. You good to go?
Is that consensus on that? Okay.
Can we move to item eight here? Item eight, approve the contract with Lancer Beebe for classroom addition.
With the understanding that the numbers will be adjusted to kind of what we just said, would you, I would guess I would recommend that you'd give me authorization once the numbers come back through and amended for Lancer and Beebe to continue and move forward with this project.
I'll make a motion to move forward with the project with Lancer and Beebe.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion?
Thanks, Mark.
All those in favor?
I'm sorry.
opposed?
Yes, it's by you. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you very much.
Item number 10, approve the personnel report. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped one. My apologies.
I'm so excited.
Yep. Item number nine, acknowledgement of grants received.
We want that.
Yes, we do.
Yes, this is a good one this month. I recommend that we accept by consensus $195,973.37 in grants and gifts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, item number 10, approve the personnel report.
On the personnel report this month, we have two resignations of positions and one of a coaching position. The first resignation is a teacher that we hired at the last minute to help us, and he has helped us in three buildings now. He's currently at Wheeler Elementary School, but he has submitted his letter of resignation that he will be retiring at the end of this year, and that's Mr. Miller. Rhonda Jones has been our cafeteria supervisor since 1985? 95? 95? She's, she's been with us for a long time. She started in the cafeteria, and now she's been the cafeteria supervisor for several years, and she'll be, she'll be missed, but she's retiring at the end of this year. Eric Hunneman is, was our junior high swim coach, and she also is coaching several other things, and she has resigned that position. And then Andrew Keneese is being recommended to be our eighth-grade girls' basketball coach. So I would ask that you approve the personnel report as presented.
I move that we approve the personnel report as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Item number 11, recognition of visitors and any other business. Seeing none. Item number 12 is to approve claims, so we have a motion to adjourn.